We are going to take up our next item, which is 7.3. Consideration of Cannabis Tax Reform Options. And I will give the floor to CIO Hetchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to reintroduce Patrick Sullivan, our tax administrator, a wonderful part of our admin office staff, who's going to lead our presentation on potential cannabis tax reforms. And what we're seeking at the close of the discussion is not action today, but direction, so we can come back to you with the necessary instruments to take the action you wish to take.
Good afternoon, Board. I'm going to start out just with a quick refresher of where things stand now with the cannabis tax program and some of the reform and relief that's already been offered. Just as a reminder, the Consumer Price Index increases that normally happen each year. Those have been suspended for two years after your board previously took action. The current second installment due date for the cannabis cultivation tax was extended until May 15th, and all applicable penalties were waived. So, right now, we were advised to come back and provide further options and more information. That's what we are going to do. I have a presentation, a PowerPoint, that I can share here. And just a few caveats before I present that. The numbers that are used in this are based off preliminary data from CDD. It reflects the approved square footage. And just a reminder that for each year of this program, despite what's been approved, there's been a lot of adjustments made after the fact. There are sites that don't yet have a state license, for instance, that may have a county permit. There can be other reasons why a site isn't able to use their fully allotted cultivation or may choose not to operate. So, each year with CDD, there's been a process where cultivators have reduced their square footage or ultimately advised that they aren't able to operate yet. It's too early for us to have all of that data. So, for now, when I give these numbers, it's based off what is presently approved as an authorized use permit through CDD, approved by the Planning Commission. But, just with the expectation that it would ultimately be less. Each year, we've experienced up to a one-third reduction from this sort of preliminary figure, so I just want to highlight that before I start. And, Mr. Chair, if it would be all right, should I present the PowerPoint?
Yes.
All right. So, this is a presentation on cannabis tax reform, the proposed scenarios and their financial impacts. This is just some initial language from the ordinance, the cannabis cultivation tax ordinance. This is what our basis is for moving forward, particularly this 56.2, which can allow for modification, repeal, or amendment. And ultimately, the proposals that staff is presenting today are proposals that do not increase the amount of tax, nor do they broaden the scope of the current tax. So, those are the constraints that we were working within as we were trying to adopt these different proposals and bring them to your board. So, the first potential reforms we are looking at are permanent reforms. Some of these have already been raised by other speakers, and your board may be familiar with them. Changing the taxable area under our ordinance from cultivation area to canopy area. This would result in approximately a 15% reduction. I'll go into more detail on it. But, it's a site-by-site basis. Some sites would incur a much larger reduction, others it would be minimal. The second aspect of this is to extend due dates for the cultivation tax to the following year. So, this year, taxes, any taxes imposed because of cultivation activity in 2022 wouldn't be due until '23. We were proposing January and May, and we'll get into this more later. And we're also highlighting the potential need for an extension of that May 15th deadline to October. And a lot of this stems from the fact that state, the state's actions are not yet set. We know there's multiple proposals in front of the legislature, all of which either eliminate or suspend the state's cultivation tax, which is that, it's the higher tax burden that's imposed on the cultivators. It's the much larger tax that they have to contend with. So, if the state does offer that relief, that would resolve a lot of the issues, but that relief is not going to come to pass probably until summer. I've heard varying timelines on it. So, the May 15th deadline we currently have for that second installment would likely not be sufficient, so we're looking at addressing that, too. This is some sample figures for what a conversion to canopy area could look like. That cultivation area is a much broader definition. It includes other areas of operation where things like processing or drying, other things can be happening there that are related to the act of cultivation, but it's not the actual cultivation of the plant itself. The canopy area, there are different definitions, and I think the goal would be, we'd be looking for direction about how to bring that in line with what the state is currently doing, what CDD currently considers canopy area, and especially considering their ordinance revision. We're trying to make this uniform, and there would be a benefit both to the cultivators, because as you can see, they're, they would get these various tax reductions. There's also a benefit to staff, because right now, depending on which program is utilizing the data, the county's tax program has to look at this cultivation area for a lot of state inspections, what CDD is often looking at when they're going out. They're, they're dealing with canopy, so CDD, when they do inspections right now, is forced to contend with both. They have to track cultivation area and canopy area, and from that derives the tax bill. So, there's a benefit, there's multiple benefits to this potential outcome. But, what you can see here, there's four different sites, for example, of outdoor using the canopy area of an acre. I just thought this might be an interesting model to look at. You can see, depending on how the site was structured, there can be a sort of a radically large difference in cultivation versus canopy. On this site, if you were to make this change, it's fairly small. It's just under 7% when you reduce that taxable area to canopy. But on this site, where things are more spread out, it's a much larger reduction. So, a conversion to canopy area for this outdoor site would result sort of off the top in an almost 27% reduction in tax. You can see the same effect play out with mixed light, which has this higher tax rate. Again, there's a site, site number three, where it's a much tighter spread. So, the reduction from cultivation to canopy area here, just under 17%. Look at this site, this much larger, the larger difference. It's reduced all the way from 163,000 to 90,000 square feet, so you get this much larger reduction. It's pushing 45% up towards half, right here. So, this is just to highlight that if your board were to consider making this change, while it's an average of 15% reduction across the board, each site is going to experience it in a pretty radically different way. When you look, if all approved square footage were to be utilized, which again, we would not expect, even though projects do come online during the year, in our experience, this number has dropped as people announce their intentions and other licensing issues pop up. So, you would see this reduction from just over 15 million to 13 million under the approved square footage scenario. This is what staff's proposal on the due dates would be. It's, as far as the 2021 cultivation tax is concerned, staff's recommendation to extend that out to October 30th without penalty. That way, we allow time for that state relief to come into play. I think has been, has, as has been mentioned, it's the state tax that is larger, it's that increasing burden. There's also the lack of retail, which the state is looking at rectifying. They are making it a priority to get more retail outlets going throughout the state. So, giving more time would certainly help on this, and May 15th, it doesn't appear that the situation would be resolved by then. For 2022 and going forward, installments would be due in January and then May. So, taxes would no longer be due in the year cultivation occurred. They would be due in the following year. Hopefully, this addresses some of the concerns that have occurred about people having to pay their first installment of taxes before harvest, before they've had an opportunity to get any revenue out of their site. This would help alleviate those concerns. A temporary reform that can help address the current market situation that staff's recommending is to temporarily reduce the cultivation tax rate by 50% for cultivation that has occurred in 2022, and 25% for cultivation that has occurred in 2023. There are some projections here about how it would impact these sites. Again, this is just for, for reference. How you can see for 2022, if there's a 50% reduction, not only would, and if that change were to be made from canopy, it would get this further drop. So, it depends on each, each situation, but some of them range for the 50% reduction. With canopy included, you get reductions, in this little sample we did, ranging from 53% all the way up to 72%. Similarly, 25% rate reduction. If you were to include a conversion to canopy for taxable area, you got a range from 30 to 59%, just in this sample that we did. So, this is not comprehensive, and there would still be more to look out, but this is just to give an idea of what, what could occur. A lot of the reasoning behind this, reasoning behind these proposals that staff came up with was trying to ensure that the funding obligations your board has already directed can continue to be met while still being able to offer relief to the industry and address a lot of the concerns that have been raised. So, when you see what these reductions can come out to, if you were to look at canopy area, assuming that change were to be made, there's that initial reduction of 13 million. If you put in the 25% reduction, it's 9.7 or so. 50% reduction, it gets down to 6.5 million. Again, this is assuming as though all the approved area was actually being used, but we know that is unlikely. Down here, this shows the reductions, just the dollar value reductions, just to help give your board an idea of what that would look at. So, these, these are significant. And again, this was just measured as being as far as staff felt like we, we could go without radically increasing the risk that we'd have difficulty meeting existing recurring expense or allocations that have, that have already been made. And just if it were to go past this point, our concern is that the risk of, of having the potentially cut funding and some of the direction already given could arise, those odds would go up. So, that's the underlying basis for how we got here. If you have any questions or want me to revisit any of these slides, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you, Patrick. Is there any, anything from the Board Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, thank you for that presentation. I know that from the very beginning, there's been a lot of confusion from our collection of taxes to our applicants, to our planners, on what's cultivation area, what's canopy area, which one's which. And I, I would even suggest that we find when we end up, if we end up doing that change from taxing the cultivation area versus the canopy area, that some applications will not see a single bit of reduction because it was incorrectly inputted and processed. So, I think that, just that confusion already, I'm on board. Let's go with the canopy. It matches with what the state is doing. We can align their license from the state with our license from the county, rather than making it two separate type of views of, well, here's your dry shed, here's this shed, here's your bathrooms. It's, it's about cannabis. It's about the actual farming and the cultivation of it, the other portions of it. Just confuse everybody as to, well, what are the limits? And so, I think to reduce confusion and headaches, absolutely, let's go to the canopy only rather than cultivation. And I'm, the 15%, yeah, as you stated, and I'll support that statement, it's wildly different depending on which one we're going to look at and what project we're going to look at. I know when we originally started, or at least when I started in 2019, you had a maximum of like 64,500 square feet overall for a full acre of operation. And of course, your canopy acre was 55,000, or 43,650 square feet, I think I said that correctly. And we extended it to go past the 64, but almost every single one of them was 64,500 at that point in time, early on in the process of getting applications. And that, that's, that's almost a 20% to 30% reduction for those that were utilizing those numbers. But then again, in the future, we saw more acres, and so they didn't require all the amenities to match acre for acre. So anyways, getting in the weeds on that one. So, I'm all for going with the canopy versus that. It's very difficult to make a decision as to what taxes need to do without the state making any changes. So, it's, it's hard for me to speak on what it should look like as we move forward, but what my mind tells me it shouldn't look like is a flat rate. And to me, even though we're doing a percentage reduction, we're just reducing it to another flat rate, which as the pound changes on its value, whether it drops down to $10 a pound, whether it climbs back up to $1,000 a pound, that doesn't necessarily offer us some flexibility. I would like, and I'm just going to put this out there, there is absolutely data everywhere, whether it's at the metric level or whether it's at varying, different levels of government that are keeping track of the price of cannabis, that we can say, hey, when the voters voted on this in November of 2017 for cannabis cultivation, that it was at this price per pound, and then make that be the dollar that we had activated the taxes for. And then whatever is the value of the pound today, we do a ratio, and we drop that value on a per-square footage. That way, if it increases, it increases with it, though of course, we can't go above where it would be at, because we can't increase the tax any further than what was approved. But if it decreases, it also decreases. I mean, somebody said it earlier, we're just going to come right back to discuss this again, because a flat tax is not a fix, it's a Band-Aid. And so, again, I'd love to know what the state is doing. It's definitely, you're correct, in my inquiries about it, it's sometime in July at the earliest that we're going to find out what they're going to do. But to me, a flat tax is just creating the same problem that we ended up with, thinking that the market is stable. We have to be flexible and be able to move up or down with it.
Vice Chair Scott?
I'm, I'm in agreeance with going with changing the way we tax, going with canopy. My question is, though, isn't Lake County one of the lower taxes comparatively to what we charge for our cannabis, comparatively to our neighboring counties? So, even with that, with them reducing their rates, aren't we still lower, though? Or, I think that's one of my questions. We're already pretty low comparatively to our neighboring counties. Do we need to really go that much lower?
So, I can address that question, Supervisor Scott. There, as far as, as far as flat rate counties go, to the best of my knowledge, we are either the cheapest or at least one of the cheapest, the, in terms of rate. It's hard to compare us to grocery seeds counties. I don't really think we could get into that today. That would be a difficult analogy to make. We'd need more data. Other jurisdictions have offered reductions, but because their rate was higher than us, typically, we are still low comparatively, or at least in the same ballpark now. The exception to that, that I am aware of, would be Humboldt County. They shared a similar tax ordinance with us, and they did offer a reduction that goes further than what this proposal is. They granted a reduction of 85% for this year's tax, if I understood it correctly. So, that's, that's the exception to that, as far as I'm aware, would be Humboldt.
So, I'm in agreeance with Supervisor Sabatier. I think we need to, before we start looking at reducing our rates, I think we need to understand what the state's going to be doing, but I'm in favor of going to canopy. So, with that said, so the taxes that were supposed to be due in January that haven't been paid because we put a pause on them, they would now be then due, what, October with the 15% reduction, if we move forward with this? Am I understanding that correctly?
And it wouldn't be a 15% across the board? That was just an average of the change, the difference here?
The one point I would raise, in terms of, it would be up to your board, obviously, but the direction you provide staff, but the second installment, a lot of people have paid it. I believe there's about one and a quarter million that's been paid of that second installment at this point, and that was based off those prior bills, which were done by cultivation area. So, we would have to, in some way, go back and retroactively adjust the bills of both those that were paid and unpaid on that second installment, if that's the path your board chose to take. So, I just wanted to raise that point.
And do we have a mechanism in place that if for some reason the cultivators don't pay the taxes that were due last year, they cultivate again, and they again do not pay their taxes, that they are unable to grow at the following year?
Yes. Presently, if someone has not paid their tax bill, that can be grounds for a permit revocation with CDD. So, if someone were to not pay their tax bill, they could lose their permit and their ability to operate simply for having failed to pay taxes.
And so, basically, if they were looking to not ever grow again, that wouldn't be a problem for someone that's just kind of like going bankrupt, if you will, and we still lose out on taxes?
To speak to that, there are mechanisms that can help us address situations like that. We're still fairly new in this, so we haven't actually encountered that situation, but I, I would absolutely expect that that could happen, and especially given everything that we've been hearing, we probably need to prepare for that. There's tools that are available to Treasury Tax Collector through collections mechanisms that government agencies especially are able to use. That would probably help us in trying to pursue these matters. That would be more streamlined than a lot of what's available right now. So, I think that's definitely something if your board wanted to, could direct staff to look into in the future.
Thank you, Patrick. Sorry for going that far out, but, Ms. Grant, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to note that your board did approve a very strong administrative penalty ordinance not too long ago that might be able to address some of that as well.
Administrative fines?
Yes.
Okay. And that also, it also includes the Franchise Tax Board, so.
Yes, sir, it does.
Okay, so, that's something maybe we can tie into that when we're looking further into that. Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that that is part of the conditions of approval, that you pay your taxes on time and regularly, and if they don't, then you don't meet your conditions of approval for your use permit any longer. And so, yeah, it does have that mechanism inside that area. I did want to speak about something that I completely missed on the topic of changing the dates for collection. I get it that changing the dates after the fact that somebody can sell their product makes sense. Stores don't pay taxes before you go in and buy a product. They pay as you purchase the product. But the idea of collecting it in January and May, in my opinion, is too late. Maybe not January, but May is, because if somebody doesn't pay their May taxes, they're already planting for next season. What do we do at that moment in time? So, I think that if we do use that timeline that was offered, it's going to create a debacle where, well, you didn't pay, so you need to take your plants out of the ground, or you can't continue. I'd rather it be at a timeline, like by the end of March, for example, or a beginning of March, that you need to have everything paid up so that the new season can be fresh, and we can make that decision of who is able to continue and who is not. I think we're going to end up in some very bizarre scenarios with some people with that.
Supervisor Price, go.
I think we could ask the industry about the timing of those dates, and when the, when they feel like it would be appropriate to have these payments due. I have had this discussion with them, and, you know, I agree that in May, it might be difficult to figure out who hasn't paid and who's about to plant. But, we do have some industry experts in the room, and we can ask them.
With that, I think we'll open it up to public input. If there's anybody in the room that would like to come and speak on, on this item. Supervisor Sabatier, while they're coming up, I'll.
Just one last comment. I, I don't mind, I think that pushing out the taxes is one thing, and waiting for the state is, is very much what we need to do, but I can't help but feel like we're pushing back the inevitable. If people aren't paying their taxes today, that means most likely they didn't sell their product. And if you grew your product outdoors and you're waiting longer to sell your product because you're waiting for the state to drop their per-pound cost, your product's just getting older and drier and less attractive to the consumer, which means that they're less likely to want to, people are less likely to want to buy their products. So, I just think that we're, we're pushing out the inevitable at one point or another, and I think we need to keep that in mind, too, because either A, we need to recognize we're not going to get these tax dollars, or B, that we need to figure out a positive way to actually recoup what we're asking to recoup, rather than just putting people in debt and then using a tax collector to go after them.
Mr. Sullivan? You had your hand up? You're on mute. There you go.
Thank you. I did want to add one thing regarding the dates. Part of the difficulty in finding dates that we thought could effectively be proposed was capacity in the Treasury Tax Collector's office. We need to work around some of their other deadlines, and that's partially what drove that. April, obviously, is a busy month, and even late March is difficult as well. December is tough. So, we were trying to come up with dates that also worked around their staffing capability. So, I just wanted to highlight that. It doesn't, it, it doesn't necessarily preclude any of the other options, but I just wanted It doesn't necessarily preclude any of the other options, but I just wanted to raise that awareness.
Thank you, Patrick. Mr. Durham?
Richard Durham, thanks. So on the, you're putting all that on outdoor growers because people who use mixed light have several harvests during the year. So they could have a harvest in, you know, March, they could have a harvest in June, they could have a harvest in September. So the due dates, I don't think, are really that important for some people because they're making money throughout the year. It will affect the outdoor growers because you only grow one crop. So with that, and as far as, I'm glad to see that you like the canopy tax. If we've already paid our installment in September, does that carry over to the new year? Because we paid it on the cultivation area, not the canopy. So that was my question.
Thank you.
Patrick, answer that question?
Patrick, did you?
We did not anticipate when we were preparing this presentation, going back and retroactively adjusting bills. It was anticipated that everything we're looking at was going forward, but that's ultimately your board's direction to provide.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. Durham?
Hi, I'm Kristin Callahan from Magic Meadow Farms. I appreciate the board's consideration of changing the cultivation area to the canopy. I think that that is a really wonderful proposition for cultivators because ultimately, when I first started, I thought it was very confusing. So thank you for addressing that. The second thing I wanted to say about the taxes and the deadlines for those taxes are that I feel like for, and I feel like I've said this before, but like when you're talking about the types of businesses that have licensing, you have vertically integrated companies and you have producer models that are just producing, they don't have drying, they don't have processing, they're just growing. And those people have to then get their product out to a fulfillment center, and then that fulfillment center would then process, package, and distribute to either retail or wholesale bulk buyers in various areas around the state. It takes time. The consideration of our tax staff that's working on this is, I feel like their timeframes are actually pretty on point in the sense of May being, may seem late to the board, but May is actually a little bit more reasonable when you're talking about a glut and overproduction and retailers not paying cultivators. Like even in a successful business, I did, even if I was able to sell all my product, I'm still waiting to get paid. And a lot of these collections aren't coming in until the following year later, much later in the year. So for me, and I know this isn't going to be your favorite thing to hear, but I think in the sense of the scope of what's happening in the industry, right now, we needed like a suspension. And I feel like, from what I'm hearing within the state, is that the state is really looking at that as eliminating at the farm, especially for producer models that are not able to sell their own products. Because selling your own products means that you have the power to set the price. At this point, when you set the price as a cultivator, you're not, you're actually not setting the price. You're beholden to a distributor and a manufacturer and, in the end, the retailer to pay you. And those taxes on the retail side are collected, and then also the distribution taxes are collected. So in the beginning, when you're producing something, you need a lot of leeway, especially in a new business that's just starting out. I mean, we all know that small businesses in the first five years, 50% are not going to make it. So you're correct, 50% are not going to make it. But I think you're going to see a much larger percentage of companies not making it when you're instilling these deadlines. These deadlines are really difficult when you're dealing with, like when we went from, you know, selling our products to having, you know, $1,000, $1,400 a pound for outdoor to going down to 200, I just sold our products for $200 a pound. 200. That would mean I would need 500 pounds to cover my costs. I realize I'm talking over, but it's a big issue. So when you're talking about deadlines and you're talking about trying to set those, set that path, think about what it really means right now for people to plant. And we want a continued economic growth and the longer economic growth, not just short-term tax revenue collection.
Thank you.
But we do have to decide on the deadlines because of all the budgeting for the county and our fiscal year and July 1st. So we do have to have the deadlines.
And from a budgetary standpoint, we already took those, the proposed dates in mind. And strictly from a budgetary standpoint, that works well for us.
Okay.
Go ahead.
For the record, I do think May would be the best for me, but go ahead.
Thank you.
Jennifer Smith. As I understand it, we're just answering one question, right? Best time for collection of taxes?
You could speak to whatever you want.
Conversation is about taxes.
Oh, well, then I'm not prepared for that.
Tradesees?
Tradesees, yeah.
Restart the timer.
So we'll restart.
Mine's pretty beef. And I really am enjoying this conversation. It's awesome. Oh, Erin McEric from Clearlick. We'll talk to you in a minute. But yes, if you harvest in November, October, November, and then you dry and then you cure, your crop might be ready to sell by December, January. So having something do that quickly is hard because as was brought up earlier, there are no, and actually that woman who did the Zoom conversation about terms of payments, there are no terms of payments. I have a substantial bill due to me from a retailer. They've sold out of the product that is filled with some of these farms back here. So I owe these farms, the retailer owes me. It's been 75 days, right? And I have no legal recourse to do anything about it. So, and I know this is beyond what you guys as a county can do because this is a statewide issue as well, but that is something to consider, is that as soon as you get that product ready to get it sold, you know? My buddy always tells me, just wait till after Super Bowl. That's usually a good time. So that being said, I had a little Oprah aha moment back there. This is to be not necessarily for this, but part of the reason why I'm encouraged about this conversation is we get the agenda on Friday and then we talk on Tuesday. So sometimes when we are, you know, animated about things, it's because it's like, oh my gosh, this is, how do we even talk about such a huge, huge topic that you guys have put tons of work into at the tax department, at the office, at the legal, at the board of supervisors? So I don't know if it's going to be decided today, but I appreciate the conversation.
From what I understand, we'll be giving direction to staff following this full discussion to come back at a later date with more of a directive from us that's more in line with the consensus, right? That what we would.
Right. If your board decides you want to amend the ordinance in some of the ways that's being discussed today, is we would come back with a resolution.
Okay. So I hope that helps. Ma'am?
Hello, Board. Christina, Stella Green Farms. Thank you again for your dialogue conversation and everything that we're taking steps forward to sustainability for everybody, farmers and county. Thank you. I just want to express my gratitude, especially for the evaluation of canopy area. This affects me greatly. I actually have a licensed major use permit, so that's an acre canopy. That's 43,560, as Bruno noted earlier. I am actually paying for over half of what I cultivate in that area, considering that it was all lumped into a huge area. So I sincerely appreciate that because my actual canopy area is not 43,000 and change, it's actually 19,200. So that's a significant sustainability score for small farmers. Thank you. Also, as far as taxes and timelines go, I am a full-term farm. So the timeline that Erin just presented of October through December and then January and then after Super Bowl, those are accurate timelines, and it takes time in order to receive a return product and payment and things like that. So anything that we can do in order to decrease it and sustainability of making us all being able to continue our business operations in a fair playing ground to remain competitive with the rest of our neighboring communities that are producing is very much appreciated to go forward together. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Price, go.
I have a question for Patrick and I guess our admin office and then all of you in the industry. Would it be, I know you have January as the due date for the first installment, but would it be very difficult to make it the month of February rather than January so that there is time for them to sell some of the product, process, package, and sell? You can answer, Patrick.
Yeah.
Are there reasons that that wouldn't work? I guess that's what I'm asking.
I don't want to speak for Stephen Carter or CIO or anyone else in our office, but what I would appreciate the opportunity to check in on with would be the treasurer tax collector's office to see how February impacts them. January was a month that was viable, and this is, there's considerable workload as more and more operations have come online. It's been an increased burden in terms of the actual process of taking in the payments and handling all the associated reporting. So I'm mindful of that. As far as how that would impact budget and financial projections, I might see if Mr. Carter wanted to jump in.
Hello, Board. Stephen Carter. I actually don't have any concerns from a budgetary perspective, switching it from January to February. My concern would be more with the treasurer tax collector's office and their workload if it's feasible or not. So from my perspective, that's okay, as long as I know by mid-year that something is happening.
In that regard, the treasurer tax collector.
Microphone.
In that regard, the assistant treasurer tax collector, we've been in communication with her. She couldn't be here today, but she has been a part of our discussion process, and we can certainly follow up with her when she returns. And also, I need to clarify that I want to correct a point I made earlier. We'd only bring you a resolution if we were bringing forward a resolution of intent. If you give us more specific direction today, we can just return with an amended ordinance.
Okay.
Skip a step.
So I, yeah, I just want to turn it back over to you all in the audience about what a difference January to February would make, and we can continue to look into it.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I'll wait till after public comment.
Okay. Jennifer?
I was going to wait till full discussion. Because I feel like we're kind of in the middle, so I'm just going to jump in. And hopefully, if I need a minute or two later, you'll grant me that. Speaking as an operator and not as part of the LCCA, so I want to make that very clear that I'm speaking for myself. Other counties do have a quarterly collection, and I think that that works well, whatever that quarter looks like. I mean, if we're really busy, if you're really busy in March, then maybe that's not optimal, but perhaps we just say it's collectible every three months. Not that everybody isn't an adult, but some people need help budgeting. And that, say, $50,000 bill hits people a little more shockingly than a $25,000 bill. Additionally, after year one, you're cultivating and harvesting year-round, or not year-round, but every year. Like it's not, I'm going to catch so much heat on this. But this isn't your, if you're in year one, it's really tough, right? Like your first sales are that, January, February, it's tough to pay that tax bill. But if you're in year three or four or five, you've been an ongoing operating business with income coming and going. So I feel like if you can offer some support and changes to a first-year operator, after that, the business should be on their feet and consistently getting income. And I don't know if that makes sense. I'm going to catch heat on it. But it seems like if you could help the first year and then you're off to the races and you're, you've got money coming in, it should be feasible to pay your taxes.
You would think so, but that's why we're in the situation we're in right now where they couldn't pay their taxes and a lot of them weren't in their first year.
I'm not talking about rates. I'm not talking about rates or any of that. I'm just talking about, like, the question was, when should the payments be due? And so I just feel like quarterly would be a big help.
Supervisor Sabatier?
So I will say before public comment is over, because I was thinking the same thing, is, look, let's have a philosophical conversation about what taxes are. It's kind of rude to make somebody pay for something that, one, they may have grown and went fallow, two, never were able to sell, but we're asking you to pay for something. That becomes tough in my position to say that, let's continue taxing that way. And how do we do that with Airbnbs? We figured it out. It's a every three, you don't pay because you have a room, you pay because the room was used. And the excuse that I receive all the time, which I've been mimicking that same excuse and I'm tired of it, let's forget it, is that our tax collector doesn't have the capacity to do it. Let's figure it out. It's a business. If we get a bunch of hotels coming in, are we going to say, sorry, you can't come because we don't have the capacity to take in your taxes? The amount of taxes we're talking about should be enough to be able to make sure that we collect this and do it correctly. And if we do it every three months, on a quarterly, it does help out the business and we can make sure that we are taxing on the things that are actually happening. And that way, that does have that flexibility. If you sell a pound for 200 or sell a pound for 1,000, you're getting taxed for the exact same percentage of whatever that gross receipt is. And so I think that we have to make a plan that's going to have longevity and make sense. Timelines, in my opinion, aren't going to make any sense at all. We shouldn't ask the industry, when is it good for you to pay your taxes? I think we need to look at, how do we deal with other businesses? We need to start doing it the same. And then my last part that I really want to hammer on is, I struggle on the amount of the changes that we're doing without bringing this back to the people. I was very hesitant to do that because it allows us to do it. But if we're going to do enough of a change, I don't mind doing a temporary change, but with the promise that we're going to put this back in front of the people to vote on because we're changing what they originally said that we would do. And yes, there was a measure that we can reduce it, but I would feel more comfortable with the amount of potential change that we're discussing here, that this also go back to the people in order to fix this because this was created during a luxurious time of being able to cultivate cannabis and run a cannabis business, and that is no longer the case. And I think that those two things, taxes are taxes, we should try and deal with it in a tax way, and this was a tax measure that the people voted on. And if we're going to change enough of it, we should probably put it back in front of them.
And I don't know if you were first or?
Oh, mine's not.
I just have a clarifying question. We were told that the assistant tax collector isn't available to come to the meeting today, but I see that the tax collector is on our.
Is she here?
Well, no, she's on our agenda. She has an agenda item today. Is she not available for that item either?
Patrick works most closely with the assistant on this, and she's out of the office today.
But the tax collector herself wouldn't be able to maybe help us?
Patrick, would the tax collector herself be able to?
I think she may be able to answer questions regarding what the workload of the office looks like in February, but as far as specifics to the cannabis tax program, that's probably more effectively directed towards the assistant treasurer tax collector since she's been working on the cannabis program. But if it's regarding the workload in the office, the treasurer tax collector may be able to weigh in on that.
Did you want me to reach out to her supervisor?
Well, we're talking about, you know, the capacity of quarterly compared to two times. I mean, I think it would be a good idea if we could understand if that's even feasible, but I'm on the same sense as Supervisor Sabatier. If somebody's wanting to pay taxes, we should be there willing to receive them regardless of when it is.
So, well, I think they'll reach out.
I'm reaching.
Yeah, at the best of our ability. And with that, in the meantime, I'll go ahead and go on to the next person on Zoom, and then I'll come back to you, sir. Nara Dalbaka, you are next. Can you please unmute and you have three minutes?
Totally, thanks. Hi again, Nara Dalbaka, District One. We keep talking about the state here, and I appreciate the county availing me of my AV361 ability to testify by Zoom today. You do not want my three and a half-year-old running around in there during the meeting. So thank you for that. And on state bills, there are several that have been introduced. Some of them are revenue neutral and some of them are going to be more impactful. And I know that the county is saying that you want to wait to see what happens with the state. I think the county should do a little bit, maybe more than that. In the past, the county has sent letters or weighed in when there is, when there's legislation that materially affects them. I think it's fair to ask the state to step up. The county is doing their part, you're discussing it right now, doing your part to help this industry. You saw that bar graph in Jen and Erin's presentation that showed it's pretty much 50/50 for local and state in California. So there has to be a reduction at both places. If they're passing bills that don't actually make any impact on the final cost to the consumer, then they're not actually doing anything. And I think that it's really important for the county to take a deep look at the bills as they move forward and move through, the four, the four different tax bills that are happening. And so I would, I would say, don't just sit and wait, but track and lobby, please, because the state does need to do the hard work that you're doing. And I know it's, I know it's hard, but you're going to help us grow a pie and we're going to show that, you know, that we can, that we can work together creatively to actually make this a sustainable source of income for the state and for the, for the local jurisdictions. So, yeah, again, I appreciate you taking all this time today. It's really uplifting to see, so, as a constituent.
Thank you. Mr. Wagner?
I just guess I'll follow up a little bit on Bruno and everything he had to say. I think all of that makes a lot of sense when you're talking about taxing and basing it on what you're selling as opposed to just this broad spectrum page that you're saying, okay, well, here's the area, so you should have collected this much, but you didn't. Taxes are really based on income, right, coming in. So it makes a lot of sense to view it differently, and then that turns into a much, much bigger conversation about how it gets taxed. So while I definitely agree with Bruno, maybe that's a longer conversation. The May date for taxing, just to keep things simple, I would say May for somebody who's going through the process. February really puts you on your toes. As Erin went through and explained, by the time it's been processed, gotten ready, contracts have been made, it's been moved out. So October, you're taking it down, November, you're curing it. So you get to December, January of having it processed and it's going to all these different companies or all these different steps, which again, all take time. So we're into January, just getting it trimmed or processed, ready to the point to go to distribution. So January, February, February, your distributor is taking your product, putting it into retail, right? And then you take a couple of months to finally get it into retail and back out. And, you know, I've dealt with paying vendors from a retail point, and one of the things that was really important was that you pay your vendors, otherwise they quit supplying you, right? And one of the things that was really important was that you pay your vendors, otherwise they quit supplying you, right? So that's one side of it. The other thing is, if you're not able to get paid, it's not that there is no mechanism. There is, it's, it's a court, you know? So if you can't get paid, then you could potentially sue them to, to get your payment for whatever you drop to them. But again, all of it takes a little bit of time. So I think leaving that cushion up through May or maybe even a little bit past would be really necessary as far as functionality of everything. In reference to the, the canopy tax as opposed to the cultivation area, I don't think that you're necessarily reducing taxes. You're just redefining the taxable area, right? So to Bruno's point, you're not changing what was a voter initiative, right? There was a voter initiative to make these laws. So over, without overstepping the bounds as, as, as the government, I think that changing that canopy area, that doesn't really affect that. And like temporary changes for short term, again, are Band-Aids for what is a short term? Because if Bruno is right and the market stays down, then these temporary changes would only be good for so long and then you'd be right back to hot water, right? But in that timeframe, then you could bring something or have something brought forward to be voted on. So I think we're moving in the right direction. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I see that the tax collector's on, so I just continue on.
Yes, thank you, Barbara Ringan, for joining us. Barbara, do you, there you go, thank you. Do you have audio as well? Can you just test your speaker? You're on mute.
There we go.
Thank you, Barbara. And so, yes, thank you. Supervisor Scott had a question for you and it pertains to a discussion we're having about possibly delaying the timing for receipt of, of cultivation taxes in 2022. And, and what staff has proposed is that the first installment would be due on January 1st, delinquent January 30th. And what's come up in discussion is this, what if it was, the, the payment was due on February 1st, delinquent at the end of that month? How would that impact workloads in your office?
The current secured tax bill, the second installment is due February 1st. It is delinquent April 10th. Our workload does start to pick up the beginning of February. Also, what we would hopefully maybe like to see in the future is moving our tax sale from May at the end of the fiscal year more in line to where it was in the past, which was generally February because it's that in-between first and secondary collection for the current taxes. So it's not, it's not critically busy, but it is a time that we do pick up in our workload.
What if it was quarterly? Quarterly installments?
Depending upon when that hit. I'd like to also talk to Liz about that because she's been the one that's actually been producing the invoices. And I'm not sure, I wouldn't want to speak without her, without asking her about that first. I know there's a lot of work that goes into that, into that process.
Supervisor Scott, did you get the answer you were looking for?
I did, and I think quarterly, if, if we're struggling with capacity right now, I think quarterly, which is, will just double the amount of work and invoices, correct? I mean, I, I know it'd make it easier for the grower, but it's going to impact our departments.
Yeah.
Yeah.
See, Rose, respond to you.
How do you process Airbnbs and TOT?
Um, that's quarterly.
No, but how do you process it? Like, what, what is, what is the process? Do they send it? Do you send them a bill? Because you don't know what they've done. So they send you a quarterly amount and tell you what kind of business that they've incurred? And granted, we, we have the ability to audit those things? Or how, how does it work? If you could provide some description and detail of how you do that? Because I, I don't see how it would be much different than that.
Sure, it wouldn't be different. But right now, TOT is processed through our Megabyte tax system, which has simplified the process quite a bit. But we do send out quarterly returns and they return the quarter, quarter return within 30 days with submit their payment. So that is processed quarterly. And then that would mean if the cannabis was done quarterly, then that would probably be a conflict, you know, with, with that also. But again, TOT is processed now through Megabyte. So it's much easier to process the returns, to mail them and also to process the payments when they do come back in.
And Megabyte is the system that you're using? Is that what you're, is that what Megabyte?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Megabyte property tax system, yes.
And cannabis taxes are done in cash, correct? So it wouldn't, or is it, or could we use a system to be able to do that or not able to do that?
I'm not familiar with a, a software program that handles that at this point, Patrick. But we currently create our, our own bills.
I'd be able to speak to that. I don't believe Megabyte has a program that handles cannabis taxes. There are software programs that do manage cannabis tax. I've, I've had some experience with them when I worked in another jurisdiction. It, it is tough to implement one of those programs until you know how your program's going to be set because you're gearing up for either a flat rate tax like what we have or a gross receipts tax. Typically, gross receipts taxes are paid on a quarterly basis. So the experience I've had would be if you were, if you were running cannabis taxes through a gross receipts model, there are programs that exist that can help you process it. And that's typically when you would see quarterly payments. And at least in my experience, tax programs that run on gross receipts on an income basis tend to do quarterly reporting as opposed to other models like the current cannabis tax or property tax where it may be broken down into two installments or one annual installment. So that's, that's what I'd say. There certainly are software programs out there that like how Megabyte assists with processing TOT. There are programs that assist with processing cannabis tax. Cash payments still remain, I think, a bit of a burden on staff. I know just because you tend to have to do appointments, there's, there's a lot of work that goes into those as I'm sure the treasurer's office can attest.
See, Rose, respond to you.
And I'm just going to stand by my belief that, for example, last year, we took in approximately $9 to $10 million. I don't think excuses or reasons not to do something that makes more sense from a business perspective of what have you sold, what have you done? That, that, that I don't think that's the way that we should be looking at that. I think we need to look at, it's a business. How do we do this for the long term like we've been doing with other businesses? If we could figure out how to get sales tax to automatically go to the state and then come back here, I'm pretty sure we could figure out how to do that here as well. And again, with $10 million coming in, I just don't see how that's an impossibility. I get it that there's efficiencies, but any new thing has efficiency issues. And I think that we, we need to look at what is the long term, not the short term. Now, who's in what position? Just, we, we need to request that it be done right. And I think, in my opinion, that is the best and most right way to do that because that's what we already do with most of our other businesses.
Mr. Chair, you do have a, well, you have at least one hand up in the...
And I think we have two people waiting in, in chambers as well. So I'll let this person go on Zoom and then I'll come back to you two as well that are in the chambers. So Michael Cole Bruno, you have three minutes.
Great, thank you. This is Michael Cole Bruno with Ghost Dance Ranch in District One. And first of all, I just want to thank, you know, for people who think government doesn't work or care. Staff actually took the time to join LCCA at a visit at our farm to actually kind of see, you know, what canopy, you know, versus acres look like. And, and it was a really good discussion. So A, I just want to appreciate that. So for people who think government's not working for you, they're actually going out of their way to, to try to, to see, to see the situation firsthand. But I want to reframe this in, in stating that this entire conversation in the state, in the counties and at the cities started because of the illicit market. And this was the discussion we saw in the presentation earlier. And all you have to do is look at what's happening in the state, and this is all related to taxes. A couple of years ago, 60% was illicit, 40% was licensed and taxed, and now we're at 80-20. And the, the revenue numbers from the state are showing this huge drop. And the reason that drop is happening is because taxes and regulation, this is what's driving it. So chipping away at the tax, which is what I'm hearing in this discussion, is not going to stop people from going back into the illicit market. What I wanted to show during that farm visit was I showed farms that are for sale, including right on Jerusalem Grade where I live in District One, farms in Kelseyville, farms outside of Lucerne. I mean, every part of this county, people are putting their farms up for sale. So one of two things are happening. Either people are going to get out of the business or they are going to go back into the illicit market, which means it's going to be untaxed, it's going to be unregulated, you're going to have no control over water, there's going to be no water board registration, illegal diversion will happen, you know, right under your nose. You'll have nothing to do about it, there'll be no inspection. So when we talk about taxes, this chipping away, this 15%, this little bit, does nothing. And the other thing I wanted to show during that farm visit was that you're taxing products that's rotting in pots, that's stacked up in containers unsold. Imagine if you had tomatoes or walnuts or wine and you were taxed on the product that didn't go to market. I mean, big ag would be showing up in droves at your board of supervisors meetings screaming at you. This is why, like, I'm speaking personally here, I'm a proponent for the gross receipts tax. Taxed what is sold. And when we do well, the county does well. When we have a rough year like this year, then the county comes along to try to say, we're going to help you, but you don't have to pay on what you didn't sell. So I would just really ask for a pause here to, rather than push something through, maybe not make a recommendation, say, if you don't have to, and, and really say, what is the impact if we just chip away? Because I guarantee you, people who are in crisis, first-year farmers, are not making the decision of whether I want to pay, you know, 15% or 20% reduction. They're making major decisions because they are going broke, they're selling their farms, they're borrowing money. So this is a drastic measure that's needed here. And I would just ask the board to really take pause of what's really happening in the market and why we're seeing this dramatic shift into the illicit market. And I would point to a call that was with state legislators where Nancy O'Malley, the district attorney of Alameda County, said, high taxes equal high crime. And she points to the fact, what we just saw outside of Lucerne is the drug cartels are back after a decade. And they're back because of high taxes and people being driven back into the illicit market. So thank you for your time. I really do appreciate, I think staff and the board is taking this very seriously. But I just want to make sure you remember this entire tax conversation is framed around not having people go back into the illicit market. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Damian Ramirez.
Yeah, oh, Damian Ramirez from Lake County ground. First off, thank you for all the thoughtful consideration of everything and the opportunity that you gave LCCA today to present. As far as the canopy, I agree with the canopy calculation putting in place instead of cultivation area. I'm glad to hear that everyone seems to be on board with that change as we're the only county or municipality that I know of which assesses cultivation area. So a big resounding thank you to everyone involved with, hopefully, making that important change. As far as tax reduction goes, I know there is a question about other surrounding counties and how much taxes there are. The wonderful presentation that the LCCA did earlier, they identified not only our neighboring county Humboldt, which reduced their taxes to 15 cents per square foot of canopy. Calaveras reduced their 60, 60%. That brought it down well under a dollar, I think it was about 80 cents. And then Mendocino, under certain circumstances, gives entire relief. And that's done on a case-by-case basis and they've done that from the inception of their ordinance in 2018. So obviously, these are some pretty wild times that we're all experiencing. So I would see that, I could see them doing that for a couple growers this year, if not a, a large amount of them. With that said, I'm just asking for parity with these other major producing counties. I think it's in the best interest of, of Lake County and the residents and the, and the ultimate tax revenue that generates. Obviously, we talk about the grand scheme of things, tourism and things like that, but really just giving us a fair footing with Humboldt and the other surrounding counties, I think is very important for the overall industry in, in Lake. And lastly, and I feel most importantly for the sake of the cannabis industry is how to deal with the second installment for this past 2021 growing season. I recognize that, that we've said that they've suggested to, you know, push it off to October. I just worry that that is simply putting off the inevitable for, you know, many farmers that, that I personally know and many farmers that, that have come to tell their stories to, to the board as well over the last couple of months. Simply put, if, if this second installment is not eliminated...
Your comments, please.
...many farms were going to go under. And all those future taxes from those operators, they're going to be foregone. And we're never going to see any tax revenues from those operators. And where are they going to go? We know where they're going to go, where, where Michael just mentioned. A lot of them will go back to the illicit market.
All right.
Straining our economy and straining our water and straining our environment. And I think it's in the best interest of everyone, really, really, to forgive those second installment and let...
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez.
...continue on, please. Thank you.
Sir, in the chambers, you're, you're next.
Michael Donigan, excuse me. Well, it's getting more and more complicated with all different angles that we can attack a problem that is obviously a problem. I believe right now what we need is something that can help the industry and something that can be done in a very, very short time. We need to know exactly what we have to pay and when exactly because we have to start budgeting. This is number one. Number two, I'm absolutely for a canopy for now because that seems to be the easiest way to at least get some, some relief or some help. And then maybe afterwards, I don't know, maybe discuss it. One more thing is about the point that Jennifer said, giving release to the first-year operators because everybody will have enough money to pay. In business, there is one law that is very, very vastly overlooked and it's very short and up to the point. It says, "In business, grow and get more efficient or die." So what that means is, in the first year, you're not going to be absolutely where you have to be to be in order to compete. Is it's, you have to evolve, which means basically that you have to have a lot of new capital investments to stay with the trend and where you have to stay to be efficient, to have your prices at point where you can still make a penny for yourself. I got my license, it was number four, number five in the county back in 18, and I still have not had the ability or opportunity or I don't kind of... I can't find the, the right word, but basically, I still have not been able to put on a site a penny because everything goes back, put this one, redo this one. It is always, 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 it's, it never ends. It's a capital investment all the time. So operators that are in the fourth or fifth or sixth year might have even less money than the people that started. Right now, I have investors. So that is one point that I just want to make. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're tired of hearing me. Hi, I'm Kristen again. I'm, I wanted to, to speak to what the gentleman just said here and many others have said, which is that unfortunately, in a new business, like what Bruno has been saying, which I really appreciate, thank you, and Jessica and the other board members understand is that we are basically in a crisis right now. We could potentially talk about all these little tiny little reductions here and here and there and deadlines, but the truth of the matter is, is that most, most of these businesses, even the ones that are successful, are going to not plant again. They're going to be gone. And I do believe that the Prop 64 legislation was really designed for larger-scale corporations, not the smaller businesses that are part of the community here. And I think that we can see the future. can see the future, but in the moment, I do believe that gross sales and a structure that's designed for collecting taxes based on the revenue you're bringing in is a more realistic path forward. And then to speak to the tax office, Liz, I was one of those people that had to make an appointment to pay in cash, because cannabis doesn't use banks, because we're not, it's just a lot of money, and banks don't want to work with us, yeah. So, it's not federally recognized. So what I want to say is that, if we did do the quarterly tax concept on gross sales, like Jennifer spoke of, it would also reduce those appointments and the amount of cash that you're bringing in to Liz at the tax office to make these appointments. So we can adjust, and like, maybe find a different way, a system to collect our revenue. And since we are bringing in so much, and there are so many businesses that are up and running in cannabis, so we should be able to, you know, maybe hire some new staff. I don't know. But I do believe that the economic long-term benefit in our county is really about supporting, like, the family operators that are here, that were, in the very, very beginning, getting licensed, following all the rules. And just to speak on one thing that I want to say about regulation, the red tape in the regulation last year for my farm, I planted something called autoflower. It's a seed that doesn't, isn't photosensitive, it completely goes right into flower, and I had to tag 26,000 seeds. They hadn't even sprouted yet. It cost me $10,000 in labor, just to tag every single seedling that never sprouted, and half of them weren't viable. So $10,000 I could have been giving to the tax revenue, went to spending money on keeping up with the regulatory system, and I could have put into my bank account. I don't know any grape owner, any other agricultural crop where they have to tag an individual plant the way that we do. And these regulations are actually the reason that we don't have a lot of extra revenue to spend towards our county, which is where I would like to put my money into parks, schools, education, and art centers, and all kinds of stuff. So I feel like making a stand, eliminating the taxes for this year, and then going to a quarterly gross sales tax would actually benefit the success of our community.
Thank you. And how many are repeat, have already spoken once? Have you spoken before, sir, on this item?
A lot.
Okay, yeah, come forward, please. I just don't want to put someone in front of you, someone else that hasn't had a chance to speak, because I've done that a couple times, and I apologize. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, thank you, thank you so much for your time. Tyler, again, from Kelseyville. You guys are probably sick of hearing from us about, so, really, I think it's great to try and move forward, to find, so we don't have to keep wasting your time. I think, just a couple things, Bruno, what you said was spoken like a poem. It was beautiful, thank you. And there has to be an existing model, I think, somewhere in some business, that we can use an analogy to find the most simplified solution for your staff. And let's get you guys to taxes, because it sounds like we're saying we don't want to pay taxes, which I don't think anybody wants to pay more than their fair share, but let's figure out an efficient way to do it. And then, a couple things throughout the discussion today, kept coming up about the state, what's the state doing, got to make sure, and I just, I think, I spoke with Supervisor Pyska about this. We had, the industry had Cecilia Aguirre-Curry, the assembly member for this district, come up, and she did a visit with us. Very, very open to working with your board. I mean, extremely, at the state level, like, anything Lake County needs, like, we can just call Cecilia, and she can get it done. Or whatever you guys need at the state level, like, she's there. And she's like, the one for agriculture. Like, Gavin calls her for ag stuff. I know I'm like, beating a dead horse with the food and ag stuff, but like, producers, farmers, that's where we need to be. I know we can figure it out from an existing analogy, and we'll make it work with what we got. Cecilia is the ticket at the state, and she is, we talked to her about working with you guys. She's 100% on board to help with whatever Lake County needs. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else on Zoom that has their hand up, so I'll go ahead and close public input. If there's not anyone else that has anything to say? All right. Supervisor Pyska.
So, I definitely agree that we need to be moving to canopy. If we wanted to look long-term planning to a gross receipts model, I think that goes beyond the spirit of what the voters approved, and that would be something that would need to go back to them. But we could make the change to canopy now. I appreciate all the work that's gone into the 15% and 25% reduction, and it sounds like that's probably where we need to go, but I'm also uncomfortable with making these changes while not knowing what happens at the state level. So, I don't know when we have to make that decision. I guess that's for us to continue to discuss. I think we have consensus with moving to a canopy, but...
Oh, the canopy? So the...
But the reduction.
Yeah, with the reduction.
I'm still unsure. I know we can do it, if we have to, and we could suck it up, but, yeah. Anita, thank you.
Go ahead, Anita.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that, and I realize you know this, but you can make a change to the ordinance with regard to canopy, and if you determine to do so, you can always come back and make another change, as long as it falls under the umbrella for the modifications in the existing voter-approved ordinance. So, if you want to give direction on canopy today, it doesn't foreclose you for making other changes later, it's just, this would be the first one.
And so it's sounding like the direction might be canopy, and it might be extend the payment dates, either in the manner we have proposed, or slightly changed, based on the discussion here today, after we can have a more comprehensive follow-up conversation with the assistant tax collector.
My only question for the canopy, or the item one, is how would this fit in, if it would fit into the presentation that CDD is going to bring to us? Or could this, or does this fit in with what County Council had stated, we can change it, and then change it back if that conflicts with something that we decide there?
Well, one of the things we need to change to canopy that will have to be done, is there's going to have to be a review of every place else in the zoning ordinance where cultivation area shows up. As opposed to canopy, sometimes it might be all right, in other cases, it won't be. But that's going to have to be done in any event. I don't think that the tax ordinance, because it's just in, or the cannabis ordinance, because it's just in draft, I think that's a relatively easy adjustment to go to. So I don't think that should present any concern, I don't think it will slow it up at all. So I think you can move forward that way. At this point, again, if canopy, and if you want to change the payment date, you can do that, you can do that permanently or temporarily, that's the discretion of your board. And again, if there are other things that you want to do, if at some point you want this to go to the voters in a different kind of environment, you can direct staff to do that as well. So you have a number of options, you just don't have to take them all up at the same time, was my point.
With the voters, that discussion, when we're talking about, bringing it back to the voters, is that in regard to sales receipts, or something, gross receipts? Or is that, is that what we're talking about, if we go to that measure? And I heard Supervisor Sabatia say that if we went that route, am I hearing you correctly, Supervisor Sabatia, where if we went that route, we would have to, you would want to go back to the voters?
I don't, Ms. Grant would be able to respond better than me, but I think that the tax measure allows us to decrease the tax. I don't know that specific ways of decreasing it are alienated from our ability to do so, but I think that if we do change it enough, it would be ethical to just put it back in front of the voters, because now we're really starting to play around with something that was entrusted for us to do.
Ms. Grant?
Yes, the ordinance as it exists does speak to those modifications, but it also speaks to the overarching purpose of the ordinance, and the voters have spoken to it. So it's certainly a reasonable position for your board to take, that any additional, especially permanent substantive changes, could go back to the voter, and do so in a more comprehensive fashion. This original ordinance was done at a completely different time, and the laws were not nearly as strong or clear as they are now. So it's quite possible, if your board determines to put something to the voters, it could have a degree of specificity and clarity that you haven't, you haven't had before.
Thank you for that. So, did you finish, you got to finish?
I finished.
Okay. And then, I don't know who was first. Vice Chair Scott, go ahead.
And for me, right now, the only thing I'm willing to move forward is just changing for canopy, waiting for what the state's going to do. Because if I can remember correctly, the last time we had this discussion, the state's tax payment was the largest burden for our cannabis growers, and they said that they would be able to pay their local taxes if that state burden was lifted. So I think we really need to wait and see, before we make any other changes, of what the state's going to do, because we may be able to just continue on with how everything is set up.
Are you talking about item one for the canopy, or are you talking about for item three?
I'm talking about just doing canopy for right now, and waiting for the state to see what they're going to do, because if they lessen their burden, we might be able to continue. It's my thoughts on the matter, with how we have things set up.
Okay, thank you.
And we would still have the May 15th tax payment due deadline upon us, so you'd need to consider...
Consider moving that one, Todd, the number...
I think if she said we're waiting for the state, that that automatically means that we'd have to postpone that until we figure out what the state is doing, I'm assuming. That's what it sounded like, what you were saying, Vice Chair Scott.
I wasn't thinking about the date, but I was looking at changing anything else in our ordinance, not wanting to do the 50%, 25%, because that may be feasible for them to be able to pay if the state burden has been lifted off of them. I don't know if I'm...
So the October payment would work for you, or do you want to keep it in May?
I don't know.
Well, we were going to have a dialogue with the assistant tax collector anyway, about timelines in their office, and how adjusted payment dates will work for them. So that can certainly be part of what we bring back for your consideration, after we know more.
Supervisor Sabatia, I think, well, first, Ms. Grant had...
Oh, I was just going to say that if your board wants to make the adjustment to canopy, and because admin's going to be speaking to the deputy tax collector about this issue, a draft ordinance could come back to you with the, it could be a question of alternatively, either a deferral of the May date until October, or maintaining it, but the language for canopy would be ready to go. And by that time, your board will have the benefit of the information from the tax collector, from the deputy director, so that may assist you in making a decision. But that'll keep it moving forward.
And that's exactly where I kind of want to keep things going, is just moving. Supervisor Sabatia, I'm sorry, I...
So, I'm going to make a comment, and then I want to speak of what we're doing moving forward. And the comment's not going to be taken very well, but I think we really need to slow down on almost the feeling of a threat, that if we don't do something, it's going to go back into the illicit market. That plays right in the hands of people who don't want to see you here in the first place. And we need to figure it out, but that just feels a little too much. We're going to do whatever we want to do. No, we got to work together, we're part of a community, we want you to exist, we want you to survive, but we also don't want to hand out things that we shouldn't be handing out. That's why I think that even if we decrease the tax today for 2021, they still have the tax from the state at the same time. So whatever we do for 2021 today means absolutely nothing in comparison to the state tax that they'd have to pay. So I think we do nothing for 2021, we postpone until the state does its thing, so we can figure out what kind of burden are we looking at on the local area. And 2022 is what I think we need to look at for, as was suggested, the canopy. I don't think the canopy, going down to the canopy should impact 2021, I think we really need to split and separate, how do we move forward, and how do we deal with yesterday. And I think dealing with yesterday cannot be done without understanding exactly what the state is doing, and also where we stand, as far as everybody who's paid and who hasn't paid, where are we? I know that Mr. Sullivan mentioned that 2.1, I believe, around that amount, 2.1 million, has been paid for the second portion, but where are we when we discuss this again around May, or when the state makes its decision, if it happens to be around July? I'll just leave it at that, but I agree with the movement forward, and I just really think we need to look at those two different items, how do we move forward? And while I agree with the canopy, I still think, in the best, in the long run, to be able to fluctuate with whatever the market does, canopy or cultivation area, it doesn't matter, it should just be the, every three quarters, quarter, the gross receipts, just like we do with receiving our sales tax from the state, just like we do with receiving our TOT from our Airbnbs and our hoteliers all around the county. Eventually, we need to figure out how to marry those two processes together, because we're still ending up taxing something that may not have been sold. And that, to me, is a very awkward tax, and becomes very, we originally taxed the entirety of your use permit, which made no sense, because are we forcing you to do your one acre, or are you choosing to do a one acre? And so we decided, tell us what you're growing, and we'll tax you on that, but eventually, if you're not selling something, it's, it becomes that much, it becomes mean. You don't tax something on somebody who's in a failing industry, or a flailing industry, that can't even afford to survive, let alone now pay the same taxes that we're asking you to do. So, I'm okay with going canopy, but in the long run, I really think that gross receipts is the way to go.
Yeah, and I agree with that, and we can take that time, and do that really well, and make sure that we have the capacity, and the initiative is well-written, and we do it the best we can, and we know that we can do that quickly.
Okay. I'm fine with moving with the extension date for October 30th, that whole thing, with the other two. If we're just looking for some draft, draft verbiage to come back, I'm okay with that. And I do, I do want to wait before making the decision on the 50%, 25%. I don't want to move on anything sooner than later, and then come back, the state does something totally different, and, you know, we threw 80 pitches, and we could have just thrown 40, you know, so. All right. So, do we have direction there?
Yeah, I just, if you don't mind, I would like to just run through it, so I'm sure we're understanding.
Please.
What you'd like us to bring back is an action item whereby you can, you would switch our methodology to canopy going forward, not retroactively, and we would just extend the current payment date to October, the payment that is due in May, or would we push forward the payment dates as staff recommended, permanently, making that a permanent change, until you change it again, of course, but...
Making October a permanent?
The, what was, what we proposed at the start was that it's due in January and May.
Or possibly February.
Yeah, or possibly February, depending on the conversation with the tax collector.
So, I'm okay with pushing to October, although I do see that it is possible that some people could end up in a real hole. But, I mean, that's business, and it's their responsibility. I'd like to look at February, if that can work with the group.
We can bring you, like, plug-and-play options.
There we go.
Yes, alternatives, they're just built into the ordinance, and your board could select from among them, or none of them.
But no percent increase at this time? Because this, what you're talking about now gets you to the point that hopefully you know what the state is doing, before your cultivators are on the hook for their next payment.
Right.
Correct.
Supervisor Sabatia?
And there's only one thing that's unfortunate, and I guess the state gives us no opportunity to be able to really move forward appropriately, and that is, by the end of March, people need to know what they're going to be doing for this business, and at this moment in time, it's kind of left in limbo. So, I'd like to see if we can have that discussion come back before, as, not as early as possible, but maybe by the mid-March, late March, sorry, early April, late April, to really have a conversation about taxes again, just because...
20 seconds, doable.
I think we're creating, again, right now, we're talking about the second payment for last year, and eventually, we're going to be talking about three separate payments, because some people chose to keep going, and what do we do with that? The state makes it very difficult.
Right.
Because I don't want to match Humboldt, we don't have the fog, we don't have all that kind of messy stuff that makes it for a bad climate and temperate zone for that. So, I don't think that we're an equal to that, I think we're much better than that. But at the same time, I don't want to set something that's so low that we lose out, and then the state changes everything, and we're kind of looking a little dumb.
Well, I think we owe it to our residents, our taxpayers, and our voters. But are we going to have more...
But are we going to have more information in April?
If the conversation is short, the conversation is short, but at least we might be able to provide a little bit more information about what's going on with the bills, which ones seems to be growing legs, which ones have been shut down. It at least provides a little update on what's going on. It doesn't have to be a decision day, but I think that I would like to at least attempt to see if we can have better clarity on what our next steps would be.
I would suggest the end of April, just to give us some more time, and then if we need to send letters, if there's one that we feel like we can back.
And like I said, mid-April to late April, I'm okay with that. I think it's, I think it's getting close, but-
Because we're already mid-March.
I know, well, I'm going to be gone in mid-April, so I want to be here for that conversation. That's why I'm hoping maybe the 26th. I'll be gone the 19th. April 26?
Mr. Chair, if I can just clarify.
Yes.
The ordinance with regard to canopy, you want back sooner than April?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought. So, that's, that could probably come back on the 22nd of March.
Okay.
Okay. And your further discussion is the one you're talking about in April. Thank you.
All right. Are we, are we clear? Are we on a good path? All right. With that being said, thank you for the discussion. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you, public, for your comments and for the dialogue. It really helps. And I hope you didn't feel as if, I know one of them said, "Hey, I know you're tired of hearing us." No, we need to hear it at times, because we hear a lot of different things and sometimes we don't get to hear your voice. We're about hearing everyone's voice, so thank you.